Call this committee in the whole meeting. For for seventeen February twenty second. Twenty two. And call me. Where you're meeting of all. Now, sorry. And acknowledge like they know is that we are on treaty five land, the traditional land in this situation, creation and the whole land and making people. By approval of the agenda. And change, okay, council through. Council over. Everybody agree?
I'd like to add something to the agenda, please.
Go ahead, council.
Yes, I'd like to add a discussion on the number of counselors, please.
Why?
That would be eight point four.
Eight point four, everybody's an idea of that.
Sorry, I repeated the request for the addition, just so the rest of the people didn't hear, is to discuss the numbers of counselors.
The number of counts, okay.
I'm recommending that we place this eight point four.
We all agree? I don't hear the infections. We've been having that. When do I need an approval?
You need approval of the agendas, Amanda.
Okay. Now, who gender has amended?
Everyone still has to vote, just like it's a.
The Council of Elswood. Council of Elswood. In Council Ellsworth and Council through.
Oh, we're all on it.
There is the. Okay. Some poor correspondence. Written motion received by Council Wong. Recent by law twenty seventeen twenty twenty two. Organization proceeded by law. I think, sorry.
This was submitted to the mayor at the last meeting council, not in front of county, the whole providing you notice. And the recent bylaw would be placed on the next regular meeting council, which would be next Monday.
That's the per information, right?
Yes.
Council.
So, Chair, do we discuss this or just information?
This is information only.
Okay.
It's, uh, you'll have your discussion at the first meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to, oh, sorry, Council over.
Yeah, just, just to, to look at the resenting. Is it possible? And I'm asking, I don't know, we're going to be discussing eight point three. And may- maybe there's something we could do there rather than resenting, I don't know. But we should be able to get that opportunity, should we not, at eight point three, when we discuss any changes?
Eight point three, your discussion would be on the changes that were worked by council at the last meeting.
Right.
So we put those into code.
Yeah.
There's still additional changes you wanted to make before goes to council.
That's what.
You'd have your discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. One, two, five, five point one, check registers.
Now, there's a number of check registers as the committee's work meeting, so those check registers are councils review. I did receive a number of questions from Council Ellsworth and I distributed the answers to Council Ellsworth, but also to councils all. If there's any further questions, the check registers, the check numbers can be provided to me and our CFO will research what the check is and get the answer back to council. Bye, Council Ellsworth.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First of all, I started Saturday. Reviewing the check register. I made a note in my email to city manager today. The, the check register is hard to see. It's not clear. So with someone with that, I said, I, I got, I'm waiting for new glasses right now. Uh, it, it was difficult to know it was a six or an eight and stuff like that. That's number one. Number two, I didn't add up the exact amount. But I'm gonna say it was between twelve to fifteen million dollars and, and, you know, combining all four check register. That's a, a huge amount to go through. In itself and, and city manager and when they address for secretary chair, that's why respectfully send the questions because of that. I thought it would save us time and debate. I'm sure the other counselors may or may not have questioned. Richard, there's no way that I, I could do a tour or look at them like what I would want to, so this morning. I spent quite a bit of time again when I wrote the email going through a number of that. It's unfortunate and I'm not going to get into all of that. And we got four checks registers to go through at one time. I would suggest if you want to debate that tonight and go to all the registers and we take those powers to do with you go, you know, as we did sometimes in finances. So, uh, thank you for the, uh, response that I got. Um, some that was, you know, for the most part it was good, but some that I'm not sure of where we need to go and I don't think this is the place because it goes from a check that's identified to know is there's discussion somewhere along the line on some of that stuff in another form. And so I'm gonna leave it at that because it brings that in. Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, a number of those checks that you identified will be part of our discussions in the budget. So administration already identified a few of those as a possibility that the council can discuss through the budget process.
Was there any other questions, Kate, Council Wong?
Thank you. Um, when I look at all this check register, there's a lot of thing to, 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 to look into it. But one thing really struck my mind is I, I, I remember I asked that question back in the I believe in August or sometime last year regarding the, uh, the red septic job. So I asked the question, is, is that job tender? So from administration response, it's like they have open keyhole. So again, I, I am not quite familiar, I do know some, but not all about the procurement policy. So when you add up all this amount that we've been paying for the last few months, it's over a hundred and fifty thousand, almost close to two hundred thousand dollars job for red septic. So now we create another question for me. I don't expect administration to explain or answer today, but I hope we can have, uh, respond sooner or later. Because lately I've been hearing a lot of rumors outside about the wastewater treatment plant. So I don't know, I'm not expert into this kind of thing, so that's why I need the administration. Maybe give us some report out of it. First, why are we hiring them to, to, uh, to, uh, to taking all this, what they're taking and where they're taking to? I don't know. And also I heard there is some, uh, to me, that means it's not functioning properly with the thirty six million dollars facility. I don't know what, why, so that's why I need the answer. And, and again, I also heard that is an investigation going on with the gas level in that building. It's unsafe because the gas level, I don't know. So I hope that will be another report coming. And also I believe they're dumping all this, whatever they pick it up from the sewer treatment plant and dump it into the, the good. Again, I don't know about all this. Is that when we when we take over the water treatment plant operation, then the good supposed to be the commission, so can we still continue using it? I don't know, so I need all that, so hopefully uh, not too long. There's so, so, there's a whole bunch more question, I don't want to take up so much time for this, but I do concern about the thirty six million dollars facility that we have to spend so much. And you did answer some of the question, you say it's not the contractor responsibility, so who responsibility now? So I those thing, I don't expect you to the expert, uh, answer today. But I hope we can put a timeframe that we all will get informed what's going on with that facility. Which can you do something like that, Anthony?
Okay.
Get the administration to prepare a report on that, if that's the will of council, so it would just be a report. Some of the issues might be in camera, others would be in regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council call.
We are mute. Counselor, you're on you.
I was just getting warmed up, sorry. Uh, yeah, I know that we had discussed that last weekend and I appreciate you giving me some insight into what was going on there. I think it's important for the public also to know. Um, so I'm also looking forward to having a discussion, uh, that the um, taxpayer can observe. I too am, I'm worried about the fact this is a brand new facility and in my opinion, I, I need to stay away from some parts of this discussion as they uh, have some relation to my work with valet. As it pertains to the building itself, I'm, I'm worried about, uh, the building's long term viability as a sewage treatment plant. When we have issues, um, as I've heard so far already, and this thing's only been commissioned for roughly a year. Maybe a little bit longer. Anyway, I'm looking forward to the report, I have no questions, but I certainly looking forward to the public hearing what's going on there. I do have a point of pre- not a point of order, a point of, uh, what's the other one, help me out?
Procedure, order or privilege?
A point of privilege. I am getting messages from members of the public who indicate that the website is down and would like to participate or not participate, but observe the meeting tonight and have not got the ability to access it. I don't know how that can be fixed or checked. But I thought I would bring that to the, uh, notice of the chair and the CEO.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
The city website, as far as we know, is up and running. Um, their website has been respected. So they may need to refresh or delete their cookies or our communications officer explain what they would have to do.
Uh, so some users who might have particularly frequented our old website, uh, may have some old information left on their cache. I know that's an issue that some of us in City Hall have. So when we put out our announcement, there are some steps that one can take or instructions for these types of steps in order to clear your cache in your web browser, which should help you, um, view the website properly. I've also reached out to our provider Allnet to see if there's anything that they can do on there and that might help, uh, ease that issue because I know not everyone is comfortable using those settings in their browsers. So we'll see what we can do about that. But otherwise, we can are the information so that anyone who has missed it in the first place can try and go about and do it themselves.
Thank you, Casper, appreciate that, I pass that in full along.
Thank you, Council over.
Yeah, I, I just want to go back for a minute. If you, if you paid attention, and I'm sure all of you went through the check register, but I did line by line. Uh, there's about a hundred and six thousand, almost a hundred and seven thousand dollars over those four months that was paid to red septic. I guess my question would be, how much of that is outside the norm? Like, I know red septic does some, or you used to do some all the way. But it would be interesting to know how much of that money is due to the issues that we're having. Now, I don't know about anyone else in this council, but we're going in budget pretty soon. And when I look at a brand new facility and I look at one supplier at a hundred and six thousand dollars over the last month, it's significant. Even if it was fifty thousand towards the problem, it would be significant what we're going to go after the taxpayers possibly, who knows, maybe we want. But that's a lot of money when you're hurting in the first place. So I guess my question to administration is, can we, when you do, if you do actual a report and bring it back to us, we need to understand what that really would be for the ongoing, you know, regular maintenance versus, uh, what the issues are. You understand what I'm saying, city manager? Okay, thank you.
I think it's a direct relation to the de-sludgeing of the wastewater plant rather than any other services that red septic might supply us, right? Cause that, if you're clear. Uh, one of the other, sort of, Council Wong.
Thank you, this one round two, I'm gonna utilize. Okay, beside those issue, also notice I think something related to our hy- hydro meth truck because of also a significant amount that we purchased from the J and J. Joe Johnson, uh, Inc. So I assume, because this is not springtime yet. The sweeper is not out. Unless they try to be proactive, start buying the parts of replacement brew for the sweat, but that's why some of the amount go. But if not, I assume it's something related to the high back truck. So when you look at the amount, consider it supposed to be brand new when we took, uh, when we leasing. So is that mean we already start having repair? So quick, so I, I like, I like to know that, why? Some of the parts I am familiar, what is it all about? One of the dry chef, I'm like, really? Brand new machine, brand new equipment, dry chef, you need to start replacing or repairing? Something is not right in my mind? So again, I hope the administration can, uh, give us a breakdown because the breakdown I received today is not enough to justify for me. Especially when I understand this part of the, the, the thing. So I like to have more detail about why is such a, a new machine, we really have spending significant, significant amount of, of maintenance. So my last question, uh, Chair, will be the maps. I don't, I remember not long ago, we, uh, two thousand twenty one, we just flowed through a amount of two hundred and sixty thousand to the maps program. And lately we, I seen there's a few more going on. I believe there should be, uh, when the grant, there should be a, a fixed amount or any amount, so if I can get that number. So we'll be probably explain why sometimes eighty five thousand, sometimes it's like ten thousand. So why is it inconsistent or is it a one time flow through? Or is it continuously flow through? What is the total amount that eventually could be enough? So those are the things that I look at it, it's kind of, uh, strike my attention. Thank you.
Yes, the payments that have gone to maps are all through the community advisory board for the reaching home program on behalf of the federal government. They have a process where separate from the city, they put up a call for proposal. The proposals are evaluated, the committee selects which ones get the grant monies for reaching home and then awards those monies that's sent to us and we cut the check off behalf of reaching home. So it varies each time based on what the proposal put to that committee and then what they're paid out. So really it's a flow through on behalf of the federal government. We don't dictate what the dollar amount is, it's what they have allocated in the budget that year, then what that committee feels like they want to fund. Those meetings are all attended by the federal government and they're aware of what the funding that's going out is.
Appreciate that, thank you. And you have a question for the hydro back question as well, or do you have any other information that?
I'm just not clear what information, and if, is this what council wants? A breakdown of the hydro, I'm not clear what that request is.
I think it was a question about Joe Johnson.
Right, yeah, specific for that. So, so I asked the question today and, and my, this response was a breakdown. Now, when you, I'll, I'll address a little bit this, when you say unit two thirteen, that don't mean nothing to me. So I suspect, or I think that's the vacuum truck. That's the first thing I think. So I guess my question is, as, as council wants, we, we, we just passed the resolution to, to buy a, a vacuum truck and if, if it's twenty, I think it's twenty four thousand, I didn't win, look at the return on the phone. There's twenty four thousand dollars. And I think we've only had the truck around six months, I don't know how long we've had it. But that, maybe, maybe closer to a year, I, I don't know. But anyway, we know what we know and that is we, we, we just purchased it. And there's twenty four thousand, I'm thinking to my mind, is there no warranty? Is there, is there a lot of damage that were that were response, what is it? So I get the breakdown. It no different taking your car into a garage to say, well, replace the timing belt, replace this, replace that, yeah, absolutely. But I'm saying as a counselor that don't know that type of equipment. By telling me unit numbers, I don't understand that. I don't know what, if that's the afton truck or that's the backdrop. And secondly is, is, is the breakdown, I'm worried if that's a new piece of equipment that's bringing in already like that. Where's our warranty or is it something that we don't know? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think, um, I can't say that is or isn't that unit, but I think, Council, what you're saying is correct, um. It's not clear which unit that is, I know we have a number of different equipment that we purchased from Joe Johnson or two garbage trucks, we have a few others, so those costs could be related to a different piece of equipment. What I will do is have that clarified, which one is unit two thirteen and what's the unit number for the hydro back?
I noticed one note and there was something to do with the gravel truck at one, one of the line items.
Just a quick follow up, Deputy Mayor, and Anthony, when you do that, I would really look for us, I mean, absolutely, you're gonna have some equipment that you prepare as I get that. But I really want to know what's specific, if there in fact is to the new piece of equipment we just purchased. Cause we need to understand what's happening here, and if it's not, that's fine.
Thank you, is there anything else with the check registers? It's good. That was a special reading to those, oh, yeah. We don't need the, uh, those are reports, they're, they're from information. So finance, uh, section six, six point one, a memo from the chief financial officer in regards to a payment of an invoice received from Jarvis HVAC. Our Incorporated. Should I leave this order?
Um, no, I can, I can give it an overview. So this is a case where the Birmingham Current Club, as council knows, is owned by the city of Thompson. Um, the Thompson Community Foundation gave a grant to the Birmingham Current Club so that they can fix the condenser and the chiller at the club, the issue is under the Canada Revenue Agency rules, the community foundation is not allowed to write the check to the Birmingham Current Club. So the check has to come through the city, the city must maintain directional control of those funds and then pay it out. Uh, so the request here from the administration is to pay this out, uh, or pay the money directly to Jarvis HVAC for the work that was done at the Birmingham Current Club. The community foundation has already provided us the check for fifty five hundred dollars and the Birmingham Current Club has provided the, um, balance that was missing. So we're fully paid up as a city and the recommendation from the administration is let this go forward for resolution to pay Jarvis HVAC at the next regular meeting council.
Anybody, Council Wong?
Thank you, Chair. Anthony, did you say community future just give us that fifty five hundred bucks?
That's my understanding, that's what the memo says.
But the bill is fifty six hundred, so are we short the hundred some dollars now? No? Just, just trying to understand it.
I believe I just went to that, Counselor, I said that the, the money that was missing was covered by the.
I could not, thank you, because I didn't read, have a read this.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Counselor. Eventually, eventually I have a correction, the Westman Community Futures was Thompson Community Foundation.
Oh, okay.
It gave the fifty five hundred. We were short a little over an adult, under eighty six twenty four, which was covered by the curly ring, as I understand it, to the memo to pay the council, is that correct, Senator?
That's correct, it's game.
Sorry, my bad.
Thank you. Hello? Any other question? Oh, do we need anything to move that forward? You need consensus?
Consensus is that we would bring it forward as a resolution to the next meeting on Monday.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good.
Oh, I'm staying permitted, yes, because I'm on the boards.
Yeah, you are, yeah.
I used to be on the board, but I thank everybody for the work that our administration did to get that through. Or will. Okay, um, onto the development, seven point one is a, you know, memo from Director of Development Technical Services in regards to the option to purchase for lot three, block one seventy nine, five eight forty eight, PLTO. North Division Development of Quaitin, Quaitin Tribal Council, uh, tribal, tribal medical center.
Yeah, so, um, Quaitin Tribal Council had approached their medical division, had approached our city, um, through the development review committee back in August, requesting a piece of land over by the AFM and the Hope North Facility. Uh, the request there is to develop a future clinic, tribal health clinic with possible other ancillary health uses. And there's likely to be rentals to other health providers in that area. Um, the recommendation was brought forward from the development review committee at the time that the land should be sold at a price of ninety thousand dollars. Quaitin Tribal Council has agreed to that and there's an option to purchase attached for council's, uh, review. Um, if the committee, the whole is satisfied with that, it would be moved forward to the next regular meeting council to provide Quaitin Tribal Council with their option to purchase, which would give them the one year with the potential for a one year extension if required.
Council Ellsworth.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um, I read through this, uh, the only concern I had and there's probably an explanation for it. That was August of last year. This is February, six months later, I know it takes time, but sometimes we gotta move these things, that might be, uh, a reason for that. But I will say this to me, when I read stuff like this, this is a good news story. We can, we, we can do with all the help we can when it comes to servicing not only Thompson, but the other side committed in communities. And see there is a tribal health clinic and KTC is prepared to provide it with land and Thompson. Now, the only question I have for the city manager, uh, is this, uh, because it's a plenty, it was, would it be still taxed as any business? Or do we know that?
I believe depending on the purpose of the different areas, certain areas may be tax exempt and other areas may be taxable. So for example, I believe if there was a pharmacy in there, I believe a pharmacy would be taxable, but a clinic where a doctor is may not be. Um, that'll have to find out specifically for you. I think assessments branch looks at how it's being used and then tells you how the taxes apply to different parts of the bill.
Thank you.
Okay, and if I can address the other, uh, question or comment. Um, yes, part of the delay was due to legal language going back and forth between the two parties, clarifying that, uh, things were in agreement, talking to that.
Thank you, Council of Elswood.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, yeah, I'm in a favor of moving this forward, I, we've been in talks for a long time for this, it's nice that, uh, we're able to share this information. And it's, it's good to see that them, um, going forward with this and I look forward to the partnership now that we'll be able to form with KTC for not just their clinic, but maybe some support and partnership with other parts of the medical area that we deal with within our city as in ambulance, fire, all those kinds of things, so I'm excited to have KTC become a partner within our city, this is good news.
Council of Elswood. Somebody else? Yeah, I'm sorry. What? Council call. Yeah, Council.
Yeah, I, uh, don't believe I have any objections to the, uh, resolution, however, I am curious as to whether or not there's been any study on the potential impact on existing businesses such as pharmacies or on the clinic itself that exists already. I know when we had the, uh, NCN gas station come in, there were some real concerns about that. I'm, uh, worried that there'll be an impact, a hard impact potentially on some of our existing businesses.
The city doesn't require private business to provide studies, at least has a tradition on any impact that there may be there, though I am aware that Quaitin Tribal Council is in consultation with the province and other levels of shared health and health providers in the north. Um, so they've done their own consultations on how they would work and partner moving forward.
Yeah, okay, that's all, thank you.
Council Wong.
Thank you, Chair. Have you guys, I mean, have you done the, uh, the comparison of this purchase to square footage compared to the one that we are going to talk about, uh, this, the third, uh, resume? Took the agenda? So what is it come to per square foot for this purchase?
Have you done any? All of that information was provided in the previous one, that was at the development review committee. So those, those, remember each line sale is a standalone line sale, so the information is provided probably back at the August meeting, showing the different breakdowns in the costing. This one also involved a negotiation on price.
I follow up. Go ahead, Council. I believe we also mentioned about one of the lot is going to be, uh, go through the, uh, the designated, uh, true, uh, snowmobile trail have, have, have they resolved the problem?
This development itself does not go through a snowmobile trail.
I thought the last pieces, yes, right? We did talk about that at that time, right?
I don't recall what you're discussing, I know that there is something on the next one.
Maybe, maybe.
On item seven point two, which is something separate. That has to do with zoning, not actual development.
Yeah. There's who? That's cool.
Uh, yes, to start with, uh, for Council Wong.
Yes, to start with, for Constable Wong, this isn't part of the official snowmobile trail for this development. I just wanna say this has been something that Kuwait and Tribal Authority, NRHA, the province. N C N, KTC have all definitely been working different parts and together, everybody works together when. We're all doing the best for the north, this is all even in consultation. That's going to possibly move our shared health, some of our comments. And commitments further and quicker, so I'm looking forward to us moving forward with this. Development in conjunction with KTC, it's definitely a good news story for the whole north, not just Thompson, thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, we're good with moving that forward to the next.
That's the story and looking forward to seeing what that looks like. I was in great for, that's my little hunting area that used to be. And development services in regards to by law twenty three one, twenty three two. Lots one through three, block one seventy nine. First division for R H D and P I.
This proposed zoning by law amendment has come forth as well from the zone. From discussions that were held at the Development Review Committee in the fall, what was identified is that that area is currently zoned for residential. There's three lots on the other side, so one side of the street currently is the AFM, the Hope North Clinic. The outside of the street was designated for residential high density, so basically large apartment blocks. The feeling was that that was not appropriate zoning for that area, that'd be more appropriate to zone it for public institutional. Which would allow the possibility of a health campus developing over time there or other public serving institutions to build in that area. So the recommendation would be for the city to rezone all the land at that area. Through a zoning by law amendment, that would also give the public their opportunity to come and speak. Because as the counselor mentioned in the last one, there are some hydro lines in that area and potential recreation uses that have happened in the past. In one of the lot, that would transect one of the three lots, that would be rezone from high density to public institutional. So if the committee the whole is fine with all these proposed changes that were recommended from the previous DRC. It would go forward to the zoning by law amendment process. To be posted for the public, there'd be a first reading, there'd be a public hearing and the potential for second, third reading.
So if we we move forward with this. There's three blocks of land there, we're looking at the open one right now. Oh, will that affect the recreational? Will that have been moved or will we? Say no, you can't have as an example fifty feet that way, you can't have it, what is it?
Yes, you're correct, counselor, so it would make no difference because it's already zoned as a high density residential use, but that's not how it being used. What would happen in that case is that council, if someone approached wanting to develop on a piece of land where there was recreational use. Then it would be council decision if they go ahead with that sale, that development, or if they make the developer preserve the trails. Or if council would say, no, we're not selling that particular land. But what we've been doing in this is really just zoning it now, so if there is a potential, this council or future council. Could entertain developing any public institutional use, that would keep it more of a consistency in the neighborhood. But it doesn't actually mean that that land has to be sold and used that way.
So I guess my concern is, we we sat in this chamber. When we were looking at developing land by the golf course and by the the. Stables and talked about recreation and something that could be changed and I think we. We came up with a good solution on preserving things and I know what you're saying, you're only gonna rezone. But can it be a part of that rezoning, but I don't know that, could it be part of rezoning, we say that? Yeah, we're we're prepared to rezon because it makes sense. But can can we say we're gonna preserve this piece? In order to 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 not interrupt recreation, God knows, we don't have enough recreation as it is, we can't afford to lose that amount, so I'm saying. Is that a possibility?
Yes, there's a possibility, there's two ways, you could leave it as it is and the council just decides on it when someone goes to buy the land. Or you could zone it now as public recreation. Or public reserve, how however we did it with the land north of the river, so you could do that ahead of time. It doesn't mean that it still can't be undone by zoning by law variation, but it's it's really what council's intention, what the signal they wanna send. So when this was recommended out of development at the time, it was to do the whole thing as public institutional, the signal that it was public institutional. Either way it works, it's really the will of council.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to go this route, I do agree with. Counselor Ellsworth that we have to protect our recreational areas, I think by going the public institutional and that. We already know if we go more apartment blocks, et cetera, whatnot, we've already got, you know, a high caseload at. Wapinik School, so we'd be looking at different schools and everything else, so. I think it's a good decision on our part to rezone this land that we're looking at, thank you.
The question I like to ask is like, do we have enough? Land debt for the residential high density development in Thompson right now?
I don't know how to answer that question, there are a number of other areas in town, not necessarily residential high density. But there's a number of others that are zoned as residential medium density that still can be potentially developed. The city also has the option of going to the province if they want to develop a new area, requesting annexation of land in the future. We've not had any approaches to develop any residential identity land, as this land has been sitting there. Since the last zoning by law really twenty twelve. So we've not been approached for any of that type of housing development in these areas. That's about all the answer I can give you on that.
Yeah, so the answer to me is no, we don't have a lot of land that zoning for that purpose, so. But one of the the the, I I I can say is concerned because of. We we don't have a lot of transition housing Thompson for helping a lot of social issue and all that. And 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 to me, and also if we change the zoning. We're gonna limit it for people in the future to develop that kind of. Housing for that purpose. And also, when you, when you, when you don't have enough land for that type of development. So you limited a lot of people that potentially or hopefully one day Thompson can be. Room again, I'm not hypothetical, just to have positive thinking, right? So that that's why one of the concern that I have is about changing the zoning. Other than that, I I more than welcome for any investment, any job creation for for business around. And the whole entire place to changing, I still have to be thinking a bit further, so other than that, I think. The project alone, I think is good, but the zoning changing, I don't know, I still need some time to to think about that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ellwatt.
Thanks Deputy Mayor, when I look at this area. If that's going to be an area zoned now that might become. Like AFM's there, Hope North is their medical clinic, if it's gonna kind of become that kind of an area, then I'm fine with rezoning it. If we have a developer that wants to develop transitional whole housing or apartment buildings or whatever. We can always go to the province to annex land or if we need to expand our our boundaries of our city to get land. So if this area, we've talked about a new fire hall, if if that whole area is gonna kind of be like that, then I'm fine with rezoning. But the three plot, the three lots, thanks.
Yes, just to remind council as well, the council now owns are the three Polaris buildings, one of those. Under agreement with the province must be dedicated towards the sovereign center use, but the other two buildings could be, if it's council's will towards. Affordable or transitional housing or some other type of housing stock. In terms of residential high density, there's also a few lots, I believe, between the museum and. Highland Towers that are zoned residential high density, though in the past council has reserved a few plots of those lands. Future public safety uses by the city, but I believe there's still maybe one or two lots that could be developed. High, high density residential if needed. You're on mute, you're practicing again.
I don't get any better with the practice anyways, but just wanna make sure it's clear, I, this city needs transitional housing. And I believe if you put a clinic in that area, a good fit would be transitional housing. If we choose to use the Polaris buildings for that, I'm also very supportive, I know that's not the. Item we're talking, but just reiterate my support for that and the desperate need for it as well, thank you.
Under this zoning change, I know KTC does bring in a lot of doctors and specialty. Medical people. And they usually stay in there in those facilities, would that be accommodated in this zoning by law?
We've not seen any plans to that effect, this is really, remember, the first one is to to give the option to the land. This is the zoning to then support them actually doing that on the land, it's a bit of a chicken and an egg. But then with respect to the previous item on the agenda. Once they have the option to purchase, they will come back to city council with a development agreement where they'll spell out. Exactly how that building is gonna be used, there'll be drawings, those sorts of details, they're not at that point yet. To move to that point, they need to secure the land so that they can work with your architects moving forward. So that's the kind of next step that would come, then council get a presentation on what that would look like and whether council's moving forward at that point. Everybody's okay with this moving forward to the next meeting of council?
I just got, it's got a. A question, so we resone. We're talking about three lots. We resoned for the one lot for for what KTC is looking at doing it. We had no interest for the other two lots for that kind of an idea. I think I'm right when I say this, we could come back as a future council, for example. And result back to residential, couldn't we not, if we didn't, couldn't sell the land and there was a need and someone wanted to buy it?
That's correct, you'd want to take into consideration what compatible uses are next to each other, so you'd obviously never go to industrial land. But you could put it to a residential high, you could put it residential medium, there's still other options there of what you could do with that. Could also be put into a public institutional, could also mean schools, right, so if it's a type of a school. Or a teaching facility, there's, there's other options that you should use.
I think that was the current discussions that we're having, shared health as well, having this zone in that kind of a light already. Might help us in that situation, right? And that's what I, Director of Development Reviews, thinking ahead of time here.
Yeah, the admin team is trying to support council's objectives on their lobbying toward sure.
And that would include if we needed a public safety facility or something, right?
Yes, the land that council's put aside for the public safety facility is the lots next to the museum, so the museum has two lots. There's other lots that council in the past has put aside for potential future development for public safety use, thank you.
I think in the future, we we should have a better strategy of zoning, because you want to centralize. Individual industrial to certain thing, just like some, some area, some city they use a cyber town. So a lot of cyber business going to that area to do that type of business, so with with this only, I think. I think we, I like, I like to see more focus into in the future. You you have one area zoning for certain thing, that way you you attract more business that, you know what I mean, like. Related to that type of business around, yeah, something like that, so all around there, so you can, that that kind of development. I'd really like to see the future that we can do that. And I I don't really like bandit, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, the one across is a different zoning. Or years is, so it's kind of very com- complicated, it's not really clear. So with that, I I can see the point to to change it, because you already have two facility over there. They're kind of in that kind of a business, so now you make the whole corner, turning to that type of environment. I think I'm okay, the only concern I have is a high density zoning for for future development. Because if you don't have, you have to ask for land, this is another long process for for us to be able to get it, what if? The development developer wanted right away or something like that, so we go to delay the the opportunity. So that's the only thing that I I try to overcome this problem, otherwise, I can support this for sure, thank you.
When you consensus to move this forward to this. Regular media council? Good here?
Yes.
Okay, seven point three, a memo from the Director of Development and Technical Services in regards to the option to purchase for. Lot five, plan three two, four three zero, Thompson Drive, self diverse consulting and security train.
Sure, so on in previous meetings there was discussions of interest in a piece of land on Thompson Drive. That's over by Wausau's agency, the land is laid out here, exact lot and description. There's an offer to purchase that is now associated with that, for the purchase of the land to develop a a security train center. The application signed alter the to the. Basically to the amount that council's comfortable with and the recommendation that we seek is from the county, the whole. For this to council for resolution, so that the option for purchase can be executed, then the developer can move forward on their development to come back with a development to be. Any questions?
I think we discussed this quite length, not too long, is everybody okay with moving this forward to the next regular meeting of council?
There we go.
I'm okay.
Yeah, head nodding on TV here and everybody else, based on, okay, how's long, how's our over?
Yeah, like we said, we have been in discussion on already.
Yep, thank you. Legislative. Tommy, do you have that or we'll get this?
Okay, a memo from the executive assistant in regards to the appointment of council members to the Building Standards Committee, Taxi Commission.
Yes, as we change our organization and procedures bylaws. A number of the committees that previously existed no longer exist as we're now going to do the whole structure, there's a number of areas that still have to be built. So the administrations have determined that council still has to appoint a grievance committee, that's required under our CBAs. A taxi commission and a building standards committee. If council's in agreement, we prepare the resolutions to bring those forward, council can decide amongst themselves or we could do through election that evening. Who the members of those standing committees would be moving forward.
So, taking off from where you left off. How many members would we be required for each committee?
I believe each one of these subcommittees is three members, Tommy, is that correct? Yes, it's on the body of the notice.
So is it appropriate at this level at this committee, because that's what we would be doing. If we were at league or somewhere else, we'd put forward names. Go to a resolution at the regular council meeting. So I guess my question is, there's three committees. There's nine people, eight plus the mayor. We wanna work together, that's what I hear. Why couldn't we, between us, air tonight? Agree on three members or whatever of different counselors for those three committees. You wanna have a unity of working together, I think that would be a good show, if people were in agreement about would work. So if there was a will for that, you could have the city manager take one at a time. And have people put up their hands, who would like to be on that team? And you don't need to go to a vote under the for the resolution purposes, but why would you want an election if you could do without that, that's, that's my thought.
It's whatever council wants, so this is the committee of the whole, however you want to proceed, I'll leave it to the chair to decide on. Um I'll leave it to the chair to decide on how to how approach that with your council.
Chair, you okay with that?
Does everybody all right with that? Yeah. Yeah, it's like everybody seems to be okay with three people on each side. Put each other up. Um how am I gonna do that? Do you wanna? Would you like me to? So that because uh yourself and the mayor will also have to be involved, I would then ask. Uh who would be willing to put themselves forward as a member of the building standards committee requiring three names?
Thank you, Doc. Oh, the building standard first? Okay.
The first one is the building standards committee.
You got two hands up there too.
Yep, there you have uh. Who was on there? How did you guys vote? I saw hands, so we see council crew, Wong, Lumber, Valentine and Tom.
Don't matter to me, I'll go on whatever. So it doesn't matter which one.
So you do the mayor gonna be on each one of these?
No, she's an ex official, Jim, nothing.
So we have council crew, Wong, Lumber, Valentino removed her name. Was there another one? I think I saw council problem. Council problem. So we have four and we require three.
Who's the four again?
Counselor crew, counselor Wong, counselor Lumber, counselor Kong.
Uh, Chair, the reason I put my hand is not because I wanna sit on deck, I have particular one I wanna sit on. Yes, I put my hands up. I'm not, I'm not into that, uh what you call the standard building standard to me. No.
So then, Chair, your building standards committee for resolution would be council approved, council landmark, and council problem.
Perfect, perfect.
Can I just confirm the consensus?
Absolutely.
The next one would be. The next would be putting your names forward for members of the taxi commission. You've come for long.
I've got experience. So I'll tell they so.
Counselor Wong, Counselor Colbert.
Be one more. And I'll make.
I go on anything.
I'll be, I'll put Valentino on it. That's without deal, that'd be a good one.
No, the council, the mayor just.
Actually, Mayor, the mayor just spoke up.
That's official of each one.
So that leaves Council Alzner, Council Valtino, and Council. For the other one.
But Myrtle, he's not here.
Counselor McMurdo, Counselor Valentino, and Counselor Ellsworth make up the grievance committee then.
So so I'm gonna ask a quick. Uh, difficult there. Uh, the question is. I I was under an impression, maybe there's something different, Anthony or or maybe Tammy, whoever. Can answer it. I thought the mayor would be an ex official of all committees.
Um for these subcommittees, there's Doug, the bylaw does not speak to that. I don't believe Tammy, right? If council wants to appoint the mayor as ex official to each, then that would be your decision now. If the mayor so was being to do so. Was nice and easy to suggest at nine.
Yeah, no, I'm okay.
Yeah, it's okay. We'll all take care of it.
Yeah. We got three minutes though.
These are. Nice and quick. Sorry, Counselor Coleman.
These are committees, they're they're things that when they pop up. That will become and take care of it, right?
That's correct. Your name stands, but it's called only when there's an issue that requires it's.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Thank you. So that would just move forward to the next regular meeting. At the next regular meeting of council, there will be three resolutions, uh each one appointing each committee. Thank you. I'm good with that. That was quick. Thanks, Council over. Good idea. Eight point two, a memo of executive assistance in regards to bylaw twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two campaign expense bylaw. So section ninety two point three, the municipal act rely uh requires us to create a bylaw with respect to campaign and expense financing. Uh prior, a hundred and eighty days prior to an election. Um the last one was passed in twenty eighteen. Um that specified the rules for finance. Um and set on the limits on municipal elections for anyone running as a council or a mayor. Um we'll now have to repeal that one, replace it with another one as we have an upcoming election in October of twenty twenty two. Uh so the recommendation would be that the administration draw up said resolution. And if you draw up or bylaw, be brought forward for first reading by council. It would be based on the previous one, but with any updates to legislation or any other changes that are required. Counselor.
Uh and so I read that on the A M as well this week, that what you've just read. We don't has a municipal property. We can't make change to that. We adopt that. Is that correct?
Chandler, just looking for clarification on how this bylaw prepared by you?
Yes, that's correct.
We adopted.
Yes.
Cause I was gonna move. That the mayor should get twenty thousand dollars instead.
Well, you can change the.
I believe yes, although don't. I mean, this can be changed.
Yes, it can.
This is wages, I think.
No, that's not wages. No, that is.
All expensive.
Campaign.
I'm just joking, calling.
I spent almost two thousand last time.
I spent everything.
Anthony? So if you have a consensus or I'm I'm not sure, uh is the committee happy with us to bring this forward for first?
I have a question.
Sorry, um council.
Thank you. Uh the three point one. Is that a amount set by the municipal or then the model that we can change?
That that we're just discussing council with that. That amount can potentially be changed by councils, my understanding. When I looked it up under the uh act, it didn't say that specifically a dollar value there.
Because the common campaign, there will be a lot of money spending. So I think we need to update. Ten is not enough. Anyways, uh, okay, I'm I'm okay with that.
I'm not saying anything else.
Can we move this forward to the?
Yeah.
Yeah, wish you. Head nodding on TV?
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, so. Eight point three, a memo from the executive assistant in regards to bylaw twenty twenty. Twenty 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 two organizational procedures by law amendment. City manager. Yeah, so um based on feedback that was given by council to the administration. Administration has drafted a bylaw to amend the uh order procedures by law that was recently passed. To address a number of the issues that were brought up through the meetings. Um specifically, there are changes to the treaty five recognition, um formalizing that as part of the agenda. Um there's changes to the words on the videotaping of meetings. And uh on uh rewording on the consensus in sections seventeen and eighteen. Now, the administration recommended to bring this forward for your first meeting at the next regular meeting in council. Let's go for council.
Okay, um I think the this topic can fit into the motive that I tried to do for next council meeting. Something to receive motion. My intention is not to keep this one in. So it seems so it happened here. So but I just need to add one more thing into it. The general inquiry, we can come to the agreement with bipartisan. The holding will be very smooth. We do need to. So I can easily remove that received motion and just go with this. Can we get a consensus for that one little bit?
Well, it's not for me to decide.
I put me out sweet.
Just I'm asking the question to all the.
Maybe I have a council over.
Yeah, I think again. If you wanna, if you want the public to see us. Working together. I think when we add our little. Wouldn't call it election nomination previously, it went rather smooth, didn't it? Well, well, my concern is luck. I spent a lot of time out in the public. I'm retired. I hear people. The public wants to be able to comment out of sight. And I think that we get a disservice. We, I'm saying we collect the interest, the the democracy rules, and that's the way it is. But we wanna move forward. We wanna say, look, yeah, we're gonna have our difference of opinion. And we're 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 not always gonna see the things same, which is fine. But rather than us getting in Monday night, starting fighting over a change. That's not only good for the council, some may disagree, but good for the public to show them. We're really making an effort in the last eight, nine months. I don't know who's counting, but it can't be that much longer. Uh you know, to 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 work together on their behalf who elected us. Why couldn't we make a change? No different than when council found brought forth the changes. The recognized treaty file. I mean, it was great. I I read true of all was was well captured from the meetings and everything else. I thought that was that was good. This is no different. To me, this is no different. So 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 we now got that peace center that recognizes all of us in this territory. But what about the thirteen thousand plus people in Thompson? Then you may or may not get anyone come, but it might be just that one question that they can't ask us. And people can talk about all they like, what a public got access to the mayor and council. Well, yeah, they do, but sometimes they like to come and speak. In the chambers because sometimes they feel that that's what they need to do or they get. You know, uh an opportunity to watch democracy in action. So I'm gonna move it if that's the way to do it. I don't know. I'm gonna move that we had that to the change. And we can say. No different than before. It's ten minutes. Not ten minutes per person, but very clear. Ten minutes if anyone got a question, we can say prior to the meeting, or we can say at the end of the meeting. Cause that's what we're elected to do. Now, there might be something that wants it before, might be after. You're talking ten minutes. It's all your job, or the public can come in. So I'm gonna ask if we can friendly, we can work together. To include this. In our changes that we're making. There's a lot of changes. Now I'm winding up here. There's a lot of changes in organizational procedure by law men or by law that we changed that I absolutely disagreement. And if I had the chance to change it back, I would. I would, but we voted to do that. So I so as as what I've learned on my time in council. Once there's there's a majority, it's done. And I'm okay with that. Didn't have to root, but I'm okay with it. Rather than getting into a dogfight again on Monday night. Can we get a consensus? And I think that's what Counselor Wong is saying. Rather than going down this rabbit hole, the old the rabbit hole again, that's what I call it, and getting into a fight. Can we get a consensus? They had ten minutes and maybe the mayor can say, and I'll be okay if she did. Maybe the mayor can say, well, we'll do the ten minutes at the start or ten minutes at the end. I don't care else. As long as they got advice in this chamber. Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Council Valtino.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just for clarification to city manager through to Tammy. What is the process for someone to want to speak and be a delegate at council?
Currently, um Tammy, correct me if I'm wrong. Under the new order of procedure bylaw, they can apply to the city manager to come speak. Um they would probably submit a letter or fill out a form requesting to come speak at council. It then be reviewed and then put on the agenda based on where it should where it should go. Um they would come as a delegate and we have to speak for ten minutes.
Can I follow up to that, Deputy Mayor? So there are, okay, so there already is a process for people to come and speak for ten minutes as a delegate. That's already in place with this new organizational procedural bylaw as there was before. I think part of the the problem was with general inquiries is that it wasn't a constructive general inquiry. Uh area that was constructive when you're sitting in the chair. So. Um I like the process as is right now, where if somebody has wants to come and speak and has a voice, they're very welcome to speak to us as the council. The process is clearly laid out. They can sit there and speak for ten minutes. Instead of just having a general inquiries where they ask a question and we get back to them. This time they can be engaged and they can actually present and speak and sit there for ten minutes. So I'm fine with the process to remain as is. Thanks.
Council group. Um I I like, I I didn't really mind the question, and I think that less red. Tape for the public to come ask questions is better. So um I'm I'm okay with. Whether it's at the beginning or the end, but yeah, I I'm okay. Uh, also called it.
You know, my question is, the process we are now, it's been two weeks, two two weeks. And is there anybody applying under this process?
No.
Tammy, no, no, we have applications.
People don't wanna do the red tape like Counselor Brew said. They don't wanna do the red tape. I think we being free and open. You know, I think we should be more transparent. Why not let the public come even sit and ask some questions? Some of our constructions, some of their destructed. But the the thing is. This process, what we're going through is shut down the public. That's one thing we can't allow as a council, is shut down our public. Well, I'm okay with letting people come in and ask questions, ten minutes before or after the meeting. You know, get them back involved. That's what we gotta do. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on that?
I wanna follow up after.
Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor Kong.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor. Um couple of things. Uh thank you so much, by the way, for making the amendments. Uh feel a lot better about um what we have on paper now. Uh I do agree with Counselor Wong and others, uh Counselor Culver. Um that. It's probably in our best interest to bring back the public inquiry section of council. I know that it's not always the most productive thing, and at times it can be a bit partisan. Uh that said, I I think we can probably, I would hope that we would all agree that it's better for people to bring their. Questions to all of us at once in an location or at a a venue where other people can hear the answer. Um rather than people continuing to go to a single counselor or one person here and there. Um and maybe not getting the full story. Uh how many times have we gone through issues where? Uh perhaps not the best information's getting out. Um this gives us an opportunity to ensure that it's public. Everyone's there at the same time. And they get an answer that the administration is also uh part of. So I fully support adding that. It's not a make or break for me, but it's certainly a a really nice to have. Also like some clarification from the administration, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
One of the things that I had noticed when I went through this and maybe I did miss it. Uh in the bylaw that we approved was this two speaking turns. Per item uh that we've adopted. I agree with adopting that, I believe, and it was in our. Uh or procedural bylaw before. I don't believe it's in the new one. Uh if it's not, that's something I'd also like to add.
Go ahead. We have the mayor. Sorry. I I was just gonna say, it appears there's a consensus, but not everyone has spoken, so all we told council spoke.
Uh yeah, like it seems that uh this is what the most the council wants. I just want to uh remind people that. If if we were to do it, it would be the ten minutes at the beginning of council uh or uh beginning of meetings as it was in the past. And asked for uh there definitely was uh sometimes when it's uncomfortable. And not because of the questions asked, but the tone and the and the. Sort of uh way they were asked. So I think we will have to make sure that we have decorum and respect if we do go back to this. Thank you.
I agree. Anthony, I'm sorry. You know, I think I really question the period. The repeat. No, I was going to respond on the first part. So. As the mayor said, I was also gonna say it appears that there's um beginnings of a consensus to make this change. What I need then is clarification on what time uh that change would be made. So would the ten minutes be at the beginning or at the end? That's what I need in the administration to make the amendment appropriately, and then I can discuss the speaking terms separately. It was at the beginning. Okay, so the consensus is that the uh public inquiries will be placed into the bylaw amendments as well. And that'll be for ten minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Any additional rules or anything else that goes with that or similar language to as it was before. So, okay, just a quick second. So, okay, just a quick second, I think Counsel Paul would ask about. Uh, the two, then we got two questions. Yeah, I was gonna address that afterwards. I'm trying to. Okay. Administratively keep these separate. Yep. Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor?
I got, uh, Counsel Ellsworth.
Okay, so. I hear what Counsel Valentino is saying about, you know, people phone in saying we wanna come as a delegation. Something was indeed, that was an option as well in the last organizational. And I get it. They can still do that. Here, here's where it comes from me. O- over, over my career and lifetime, there's a lot of people that can't speak up for themselves, so we do it. So they won't vote you to red tape. That's my reason for allowing them to come public. They're just not going to do it. So what you do is you get beat up downtown everywhere else. Because they feel that they've been denied that privilege. When it comes to. Um, the ten minutes, the mayor is, sometimes I think she has more powers than she realizes. And that is, if someone is out of order, if someone's got a tone. Uh, in the public that's asking questions, she can shut that down. I read an article just recently, an editorial by, by, by. That talked about that. If you're gonna go into public office. Their skin better get thick, and that's how I've learned over the years that I've been in leadership. Because people are not always kind, they're not always pleasant. And sometimes I wish they would just be that like that, but we're, we're not gonna get that. And so I think that the, uh, chairperson, whether it's the mayor, deputy mayor, whoever's chair in that meeting. Needs to take that position. If someone's got a tone. Uh, or, uh, saying something inappropriate. They shut it down. That's what they do. And the last part of this is, I, I found with the last. And, and the mayor had to do this many times. Because administration wasn't there, or someone forgot it. When someone comes forward with questions. They should not have to stand up at a meeting, the following meeting, and ask for those answers again. They should be communicated, because that's where some of the problem and frustration gets involved. Should be communicated by email or mayor councils copied? Or then, as I've seen Anthony do many times throughout the last three years, he says at the last meeting. This is what took place. These are the answers. But we missed up a few guys, and we're human and we can do that, but that's where we don't look so good. So I'm pleased to see that the, the, the majority, it's called democracy, I guess. Of us would like to see the public being able to say, but it has to be. Uh, protected. And, and the fact that we don't allow the public come in there and just started causing the scene like they should, that, that should not be happening. If I was in that chair, it would not happen. So. Uh, absolutely, Deputy Mayor, I've got my second say on that.
Uh, Counsel Valentin.
Thanks Deputy Mayor. Uh, to City Manager, can we have, uh, wording attached to it that says the, the mayor has the. Right, or the, or general inquiries have to be respectable, or can we tighten up the wording in that regard? Because that's part of my problem is, the general inquiries is very disrespectful so far.
I believe there is wording, but we'll double check. Uh, what my intention is, is that, um. Because we're making changes to what's proposed, we'll bring this back to another committee, the whole. So if you have time to review it again and make sure you're comfortable with the wording, or we can, your first reading with the understanding then that you would have to amend it as we go. So actually, Tammy, maybe we just go to a first reading?
Yeah.
I think I got everything.
And if there's, if you're unhappy with the way we changed the wording, you let us know after that first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Coleman.
Uh. Is this just for council meetings, or is this for council of the whole?
There's different sections explaining how it works for three, the whole, and for, so right now, what I've heard is you're, you're opening this up. To committee of the whole meetings, or is it to council meetings? That also has to be clarified.
I want both.
I'm sorry.
It should be just for a committee of the whole. Because that's where the council is debating. Regular meeting of council is where it's approved. So the debate would happen, so they could have, if they have any questions, they could ask it at the. At the committee of the whole, council could hear it. And then when they make changes, if you don't stay like what the public has to say. But that's where it usually takes place, about committee of the whole, for question period.
Okay, can we, uh, both?
It's council's will, so you can have what you want, because this is your bylaw. So if council's directing us to put it for both. You heard the recommendation is for it to be the committee of the whole, but if that's, if you'd like it at both, then that would be your direction to us.
Well, I guarantee why we won't have a vote, why have a one and not the other. We're giving the public more chance to speak at our council, which we're all the time. Things that go on, they don't know, but it gives them a chance to come in and stay their peace. And this twenty minutes, so that's all, this ten minutes each week. And if anybody takes part of the time to come down there while I ask his question, clarify. I think we should allow. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Paul.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Uh, I've heard the recommendations from the administration. I don't understand that recommendation. Clearly, uh, uh, I would think, given the workload that we will have in the committee of the whole. Uh, we will likely be much, much more time pressed in the committee of the whole. This new model is supposed to streamline the actual council meetings, which, you know, once we've got consensus coming out of committee of the whole. Should make, uh, the council meetings roll much more quickly. Uh, in, in that regard, it would be, in my mind, the best for us to at a minimum. Have the public inquiry during council meetings in the interest of time.
Well, okay, thank you. Counsel Wong.
Thank you Chair, I, I, I'm a little bit confused now, because I had a public told me about. The changes is for the regular council meeting, general inquiry. The general inquiry never, we never talk about it to committee at all. So I'm, I'm confused. Right now, we say the general inquiry is. Is allowed at the regular meeting?
It's not at all.
It's not at all, anyway. It's not changes, right?
We're changing.
So right now, we're trying to do this, uh, friendly amendment to add this back, right?
Right.
And, and, and another piece, I, I think we still missing is about the, uh. The delegation. I don't see that in the writing as well, do we? Or we don't?
Yeah. There is delegation or delegations to the.
It's still there in place?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, forgive me. So anyway, uh, I, 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 I need the clarification. Right now, what I'm trying to do, oh, by the way, appreciate the, the support of this, uh, small internal movement. So, uh. The amendment for the general inquiry is strictly talk about the council regular meeting, right? Nothing do with the, the committee at all. Or we talk, talking about both.
Both, right now, like we were, like, if, if, if there's some confusion.
Yeah, that's why.
Regular or regular meeting council. Oh. So.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor. There's no, there's no doubt about it. We used to have general inquiries at the regular, uh, council meeting. Uh, we've gone from a committee of the whole to, um, from, from all the other committees. I suggest it should be allowed at, at both. And secondly. I want something very clear. We seem to forget something. And I've heard it a few times, and this is not at any one, but I want to be very clear. We come in as a committee of the whole, and it's consensus to move forward. That's fine, but that does not take away from a debate at the regular council meeting. If you say it takes away my debate, you've taken away my democracy. Why am I even showing off? It is a rubber stamp. It's not a rubber stamp. I agree that it is, is better streamlined, and we get most of what we would say in meetings that denies out of the way. But it doesn't stop a counselor from objecting to a resolution. He can still be, he or she can still debate that. That doesn't take it away. So I would say to the chair tonight, the question really is, do we want it at both? And I'm, and I'll start off by saying I wanted it both.
I'll say, I want it both. Can I see, uh, hands for, towards the both? So we have an idea.
Sorry, I, I, I.
You wanted both meetings.
Oh, both. Oh, I thought you said both, sorry, of course. Okay, we got.
They, you've got.
More clear.
We've five right now. I see that consensus that says, uh. Both. Are we all ready with moving that forward?
Discretional.
All right, yeah, we've had a lot of, everybody's had to. Just speak a few times later.
I think. It's their job.
Is that already, Anthony? Yep, so the next one that needs to be clarified is the speaking of two terms. The reason the number of terms wasn't put in there is because it's really put to the discretion of the chair. So if the chair felt like there was an issue that was more required a third turn because it was so important, you could do that. So if council wants us to put that language back in, let me get it to, we could do so. And I see Tammy has her hand up.
Section six point three point seven point four talks about debate and how. Nobody can speak twice to something until. Okay, let me just read it for you.
Yeah. Should I go to Kathy while you're looking that up?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Counsel Valentin.
Uh, thanks Deputy Mayor. You can let her speak, because I was just gonna say that I wanted to continue it two, two times.
I know it wasn't in the public's amendment, but it was in the, uh, actual. Oh, yeah. By law.
Sorry, my computer is being a little glitchy here. Give me one second.
I think it should be, they speak as many times as they want. Chair, chair controls it.
Well, I already messed up tonight. Some people got to speak three times, eh?
Oh, girl. I give my, I give some of my to other counselors.
Oh.
It's six point three point seven point four says the chair to not recognize the number to speak for a second time on a subject. Before any other member who wishes to has the opportunity to speak for the first time.
Perfect.
The next one. There's a lot of talk points or more.
You know.
But, but after. After, so, uh, everybody's had their chance to speak, right?
Yeah.
You know, I think second or the third done, but everybody gets. A one chance. Am I, am I correct?
One chance for first round. First round. First one. Me, I'm looking for clarification, and do you want the additional language that every person, the maximum speaking is twice? And that's what is not clear to me. That's what I'm hearing that we wanted.
I do.
I, I agree. It'll make things move, uh, faster.
And do it. I'll begin. Uh, Colleen here, I find that when I started doing it, it's been a lot. It's a lot better. Uh, counselors might have to, you know, think ahead, but I, I, I really appreciate how everybody has stepped up to the plate for this, uh. Two-time speaking. I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I agree with the committee of the whole. We're gonna be in some of these meetings, so. You know, once we get into more. Potatoes, some of these meetings, it's gonna be very low. I, I go in line with it. But then getting a two-time speaker, you can speak for a while, right?
Well, that's why we speak. Because we're trying to, we might need to speak more, to get more fair. Instead of just speaking two times, somebody who's really experienced in that. If that position can speak more because they know more. Right? So I don't think we should. Put a number on it. I think we should, uh. Let, let, let the chair do it. She's got the discretion. Right? Uh, long you speak, how many times. If it gets too bad, we'll cut it down. Right? But I think all in all, is that we can grab it of any speech from anybody to help us. City. I think it's great.
Uh. Uh, there's no consensus at this moment that I can see. I just need you to establish. You have four that are in support and three that are, Counsel crew hasn't spoken yet. You don't have counsel for her, so. I need you to provide the consensus on what that is. Want me first say, I don't, I don't mind this two time thing. It's been working good, and for the most part, if someone needs to speak an extra. Allow, so. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Oh, there, there, there's nothing. If we're following the rubber rule, what, what stops? You could have one round discussion, even though it says you can get two. What, what stops your common question?
Okay.
Nothing. You call a question. Question. Ends the debate. It ends the debate. So where's one, two, three, four? I mean, I don't think we should be all night talking about a subject three or four times, but Counsel Coleman is right. There might be a, 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 a subject matter that is very important that we're discussing, and, and some counselor picks up, oh, by the way, I should have. Brought that up. That might help us for the third time. Now, in saying all of that. Um, you wanna do it two times and. That'd be consensus, just like we had it before. That'd be fine, but I'm okay with. The way it is now, everyone speaks once, and then make sure that happens, and then you vote the second time. And if people don't wanna speak the second time.
Go ahead. Uh, you have three counselors that want it at the discretion of the chair, and five counselors that want it, uh, defined as two speaking terms. How many blocks? Five. Five. Counselor Cotton also has his hand up. Yeah. Counsel, so, uh, Counsel Paul.
Thank you. I just. I think what would be nice in terms of wording would be to, uh, word it so that the two speaking opportunities is the norm. But, uh, where new information arises that, uh. A counselor can address the chair or ask the chair for permission to speak in light of that new information. I see it would be at the discretion of the chair at that point. Yeah, both of them, that way.
Well. Can you do that better wording? Then you're basically. The discretion of the chair, and that would be the directions of that discretion of the chair. I go to Counsel Valentin first.
Uh, thanks Deputy Mayor. I, yeah, I am all for the two people speaking. I think that it worked, it's been working. We continue that path. Absolutely, we can always call for the question, but then that's just gonna be us always doing that, which really. Won't make anybody look good if that's the route we're gonna go. So I think it's been working, and I'm all for it being two times. If, if we can do something with the new information, I like that too, but I want the, would like the wording to say two times in there.
Wow. Well, what is the number? Oh, sorry, Counsel Wong.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I personally, I, I'm okay with anyway, but the thing is, to me. The final decision is to go to the chair. Doesn't matter you put two times, three times. I believe the power is already given to the person that's sitting up there with a gavel. Whether the person want to give the council like ten times debate. That person have a power, or they said no, just one question. That can make the rule as they go, but. The bylaw is just a guideline written down there. I, I personally, if I have that power, I would not like to put a number for debate. I would like to opt to the chair, just show competent as a chair. Not everybody can be the chair. So you have to show that you have the power and that competent to run the show. So by allowing one time or two time or three time, whatever the chair feel like to that night or the topic. So. I'm okay with the, the suggestion with the two time, and then you add the extra word. But like I say again, if I have that authority, I would not like to put a number. Just, just to show more, uh, democracy and, and debate tools for us to use.
All right, we have, for now, I think. Still, three to five? I believe so. I'm not a hundred percent sure. What the administration could do, if that's what your wishes. We could develop language and bring it back for review the next committee of the whole.
Yeah, well, I think we're, probably, but people, I think we should be allowed to speak. For the people whenever we want. That's why we're, now you don't live it, I mean, a lot of time we're speak.
Well, then you're, you're putting it in writing that we all agree to, at least when there's one person, the chair doesn't say, okay, that's the end of it, or. You see in, in the. In this meeting, the whole, you can't call for a question. Right? So we can't end it. We're, we're going around the same circle here for a while now. Um. Yeah. An arson, shut it down, or. Like, i- if this was a regular meeting of council, you would say that's enough. We, we've all had three terms. Counsel over.
Deputy Mayor, so much as it eats and pains me to say this. You were given direction seven minutes ago. You had a consensus. I suggest you rule.
So the consensus is, you said there was five for the. The administrative developed language to limit speaking to two terms. Is our consensus? Everybody will pay a lot? Are you putting your hand up?
Only to speak, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I just like to point out to my colleagues that there if you the possibility, you may only speak once. This chair probably wouldn't do that, but other chairs in the future might. I do, I really think being able to speak only twice is problematic if you don't have the opportunity with new information to speak again. As probably the person who knows the most about sewage treatment plant operation, if I had asked a question and discussion had went on, I'd use up my comeback and answer. And I had used up my two opportunities, it would be unfortunate for the city and even for administration that you not be able to get the opportunity to clarify or raise points again, but again, my preference is for two, the opportunity for further discussion should new information arise.
Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, so the administration will bring for those proposed language there for council to consider the next committee hall. So the alternative. We'll develop language that council could debate it further at that point. So you have language in front of you on different ways to say the concepts that you're bringing forward. Okay, thank you.
So clarification, Chair. Does that mean we will do the first meeting this coming Monday then?
Yes, we are. No.
What?
No. No, there's a number of changes that we have to bring in. Council still has to debate. Probably want that wording.
Oh, you're not done yet.
Come back at the next committee hall.
It would come to the committee of the whole, then you would decide on your language, or the administration can make a decision, put it in, and then you debate and change it after. Like we're doing right now. That's correct. First readings generally, you don't do that sort of debate, but that's what I'm saying. That's the purpose of the committee of the whole is that you come to your consensus on each of those and then we bring it forward.
Well, some of these changes, if they're substantial, so I'm going to need a little bit more time, so.
You have to remember the administrative burden because all the paragraphs have to line up. And once you make those changes, you're entitled as a counselor to see it completely changed properly, not on the fly. So you have an entire full document, if that makes sense, right? So if you make changes on the fly, we have to provide you with a full document so that everything lines up and is correcting it. That's why our preference is to have it nailed down as much as possible first. Also, well.
Thank you, Chair. So far, I've heard the only two changes is adding the general inquiry and the two-round debate. The rest is right there. I think we all agree with the the way that the administration already did the changes, right? And there's something I'm missing. What else is the changes that we need to go more time and because all this is already here?
This isn't the only thing the administration is working on. So we have three days before the next council meeting. We have to have this to you by Friday at four thirty. So we still have to do work on our end to get this already free. And there's other work to do.
Yeah.
We have to know this one doesn't go on the paper because it's the bylaw of council, just reading it's on, so it's not under the planning act or anything like that. But we still have to do work on our end to get it to you the way that you want. Okay, so it's not what we're trying to delay. We're just saying you have to give us time to do the work so that it's brought to you, brought to you properly. Thank you.
What if the time sense reveals?
I just got one point to make, and that is, we've had a good discussion. But when we come back and we agree, okay, I hear what city manager saying, needs time put together. That's, that's fair. But the intent of these discussions that we've had tonight on this subject should be the intent going forward. Nothing changes. Nothing changes. That's the intent. You can say I'm a little doubtful of why we're doing it. Yeah, I am, but I want to be very clear. We've agreed ten minutes each for regular meeting, ten minutes for the committee of the whole. And if the agreement is for two speakers, then when we come back, other than some works many that needs to take place, this intention not change. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right. These intention not change.
I believe that the first part was ten minutes for all discussion at the beginning, right?
Ten minutes for the, ten minutes for general queries.
Right, for general inquiries.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's the way I heard it.
Shall we all sign the letter of understanding?
Okay. Thank you. Much for everything. Thank, can I have a? Great. I don't remember what it was.
Thank you. With the new committee of the whole, the the need for the num, the large number of counselors for the city is somewhat diminished. Believe that it's in the city's best interests to drop to the number of six. Just want to throw that out there. I believe there's a six-month notice period required in order to do that. And I was reminded of that today, seeing the bylaw for campaign finance. So I don't know if it's too late, but there's something I'd like to throw on the table for discussion.
Yeah, so it would be, just to clarify, would be six counselors and plus a mayor. It always has to be an odd number.
Yeah, obviously.
Seven, including the mayor. I believe there's still time to do this, but we would have to do it shortly.
Correct time? Before April.
Before April. I believe that administration was going to bring this up as a budget discussion, just because previous councils had brought it up. But if council's generating this on their own, well, then you can have that debate here at this time publicly. Counselor Valentino?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We wanted to do this the last term of council. And it was my understanding that we are governed by a charter, our city, the Charter of Thompson. I see Anthony got your hand up perfect, and that it had to be the will of the province to make that wording change in our charter to reduce the number. And there was no willingness at the province at that time to help us out to reduce the numbers. So just bringing some back, back content that we had looked at this also in the past.
Yeah, that's correct. During the previous council that was brought forward as a request to the province, it was not possible without changing the Thompson Charter Act at the time. Since then, the changes have been made under the municipal act, so the city of Thompson, a number of others are now aligned with the municipal act, which allows council to change its council composition by numbers as long as the timeline is met prior to an election. I believe it's a hundred and eighty days. So those changes have legislated being made at the provincial level, which now gives council that option to, to discuss this as a possibility.
I guess my concern is, I mean, I'm certainly in agreement with Counselor Fountain. And I was aware of that discussion that took place in the past. If we wait till budget, but just not till March now, what would be too late?
I recommend this is the purpose of committee of the whole. I would recommend you debate it now. So like I said, administration was going to bring that forward to see council how does desire, but I would, I would have your debate now.
So.
You could miss your deadline is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's my concern. I just want to follow up with you.
Okay.
The discussion and the old work counselors that's been around Kathy and the mayor of Duncan would know more than we would know that's new. We're new blood. We're new blood. We're not old blood. Was there another part to that? Weren't you looking at a full-time mayor and six counselors, or was it just the six counselors? What was that?
Just the six counselors.
No, it was just to clarify that it was just the six counselors.
Yeah.
Mayor Spook. Mayor Spook.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Sorry, I should have, I just wanted to clarify, it was only the counselors. There had been a bit of talk, but not in anything serious about what the mayor, what they were going to do with the mayor.
I would just like to ask administration, I would be all for going with, to look at the numbers and have these numbers prepared and we meet the deadline to look at going down to six. Obviously, I'd like to see the numbers first, but I would, I would say to move forward with it. Thanks.
I'm okay moving forward.
So everybody, Counselor.
Thank you. The historical was suggested by the mayor, Dennis Fensky, to reduce the council. I was the one who says six. I was the one who suggested reduce two. And that time, Counselor Judy was giving me heck about because I came in, I think the second last, last person got elected. She said, you're very brave to do that. That means you want to eliminate yourself. I said, I don't care. I talked about what good for Thompson, because when you look at the the thing around Thompson, we do not need eight. We do not need eight. And my point is, I think six will be, you make the public pay more attention to let the person rather than just check mark, because you have eight others to choose, so you don't really pay more attention or select a better selection. So that's why I say six is, I think is a good thing to start and at least people more focused to who they want to represent them. So anyway, I think six, I'm okay with that, definitely.
I think I'm all right with that too, with, especially with the changes to our bylaw, like where was it? Separate committees? I didn't get to attend any committee meetings in spare smoking, Counselor Ellsworth, but just because I worked there during the day, but while for a while there, it was hard to shuffle to to each of those committees of each body. Now, it's all a lot more manageable. Now, are we just?
When I saw the council approval. Yeah, with the new structure of committee of the whole, six is definitely doable. The other way around, I think it would be when we're running separate committees, it's a lot to leave work. So as this new structure is, I think six is doable.
I got no problem with six, but the new council comes in, wants change to do it. They have power change. Yes. Right? So you're all.
Sorry, Counselor, that's always the case with most municipal legislation. So councils can change. The thing is, if the next council came in and decided they wanted to change it again, I believe they would have to wait until the next election. So it's not like they can add councils in midterm. They would make the change and then it wouldn't come into effect until.
Okay. With the committee of the old, would that make a change? If you decided you wanted to change the committee, you all go back to committees. That'd be button, like Counselor, when the mayor of America said, that's a lot more pressure on the counselors.
I guess every council under, at least once under their term, has to review their organization procedures by law. So there's no way, that's the will of that council. So once they're duly elected, that's their will.
So if that's the will, how come we change it now? Because we already done ours three or four times, three times, two times.
Because that's the will of council. Okay, thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I'm quite surprised at the level of support here. That's good to see. Thank you, everyone, and even those who don't support. Thank you for the discussion. I think what's really enabled this and made it different from the past is that this new council of the whole model takes the pressure off of having so many individuals managing so many separate meetings. So you know, this is, in my mind, a good news thing. If we can go down to six, it's a small savings, but nonetheless, it certainly changes the dynamic, I think, of, it has the potential to change the dynamic of the council, and I appreciate when Counselor Wong's comments about people needing to think a little bit more about who they're voting for because it's a smaller group of people. Anyway, I'm pleased to see this go through. I hope it does. Thank you all.
Yeah, I'm definitely for six counselors with this committee of the whole. When it was on committees and even with the, you know, being halftime mayor and having to attend each of the committees on there, that took up a lot more time. This is so much nicer and not having to go to try get to other counselors that weren't to committees with the questions and answers that they needed. So I definitely think six counselors and a mayor is a doable, especially when we're at the committee of the whole level. So thank you very much. Bye.
So do we need anything else for that?
I just confirm your consensus. I believe I verify the consensus. So the administration will work on the provincial paperwork that's required for that, as well as the financial impact, which we could bring back to you. If there's anything else.
Yeah.
I would bring that back to the next committee of the whole, or the next, once the information's ready.
Thank you. I have so many. Big motion in the room.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.